Live on Facebook. Good evening, happy Thursday. And welcome to our school committee meeting on this Thursday evening. I believe we have three meetings left. We're so close to the end of the school year. Our schools are open, let's keep the momentum up. And let's begin our meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:01. And let's begin with our pledge of allegiance. So, school committee members and central office team. Please join me in unmuting yourselves and beginning our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please mute yourselves.
Veronica, do a roll call, please.
Thank you for catching that, Ms. Carlyle. Yes, Veronica, please, um, let's do a roll call for attendance sake.
Sure, uh, Ms. Enriquez.
Here.
Ms. Santiago. Mr. Jimenez.
Present.
Ms. Alfaro.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Ms. Garcia Marza.
Present.
Mr. Wilson. Ms. Carlyle. Ms. Carlyle.
Sorry, I'm muting myself. Present.
Okay, and I'm letting Ms. Velez in right now. So that's, uh, seven in the, um, present and two absent.
Thank you, Veronica. Already, team, do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on March 25th?
Motion to accept.
March 30th.
Motion to accept the minutes from the March 25th and 30th meeting.
I second it.
I go. I second.
Thank you very much. Veronica, do we have, uh, public comments today?
Yes, we have two that are here now, I, I will let them in now.
Awesome.
Our first speaker is Sarah.
Hello, Sarah, welcome. Please state your full name, your address, and you have four minutes to share your comment.
Hi, my name is Sarah Aljibori. I live in 79 Burma Road Apartment A in Chelsea. Um, I would like to start off this evening by saying that I currently go to Excel High School in East Boston. I am a junior. And however, while I am a BPS student currently, I have attended Chelsea Public Schools. Um, I went to the Berkowitz in elementary and I went to the Wright up until sixth grade. And I noticed a common trend, um, with my experience, uh, in Chelsea Public Schools. I realized there was a lack of recognition for people like me. I realized there was a lack of recognition, a ra- a lack of identification, and a lack of celebration of people like me. There is a, a community of, um, Arab students just like me in Chelsea. While we are a small community, we're still here and we contribute just as much as everyone else. However, we are not celebrated like everyone else. And I feel like I would love to see this implemented in Chelsea Public Schools. I pushed for Arab Student Union to be created and formed at Excel High School. Because I felt like there is a lack of representation for Arab students. I feel like if this was implemented in Chelsea Public Schools, this will only help Cho- this will only help Arab students contribute even more to the Chelsea community. I would like to also be mindful of the fact that, um, I currently am serving Ramadan, so I cannot stay any longer. Uh, because I do have to. But I would like to take all of, um, your time.
Sarah, I'm not sure if you're finished. You have two, but I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Um, sorry, can you hear me right now?
A little bit. Can you try again?
Did you hear everything I said up until that point?
Yeah, yes, we did.
Okay, that was just me concluding my time here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Bye.
Our next speaker is Islam.
Hello, Islam, you have four minutes. Please state your full name and your full address.
Um, Islam Alwadi, 188 Brook Street, East Boston, Massachusetts, 02128. Um, so Heritage Months are the perfect opportunity that designate celebrating and acknowledging various ethnic and marginalized groups. In these periods of time, it's really not only important to celebrate, but also educate others on various groups' histories and contributions to American history. Specifically, when it comes to being an Arab American, you realize that even in 2021, most people don't know what it means to be Arab. There is still a lot of heavy discrimination of Arab Americans to this day. Especially in a world where minorities are always constantly being attacked, it's very important to fight ignorance with education. Um, April is Arab Heritage Month. It is also the perfect opportunity for Arab Americans, wherever they may live, that being East Boston or Chelsea, to take a second and appreciate that Arabs are more than just the stereotypes that float around us. We've contributed so much to civil- civilization. That including mathematics, astronomy, our cultural foods, et cetera. And from seeing Excel celebrate Arab Heritage Month, it's united my school even more than it once was. Celebrating this month in Chelsea Public Schools would be such a good opportunity for others to understand perspectives and educate themselves, while also broadening their community as well as their personal growth. And, um, schools help influence the new generations and educate students and teachers about our cultural and ethnic differences, which is why I think celebrating this month would be a huge role in the acceptance of diversity in Chelsea.
Thank you so much, Islam.
Thank you.
Veronica, does that conclude our public comments section?
No, we actually have one last speaker, Salma.
Perfect. Welcome, Salma. You have four minutes. Please state your full name and your address. We have four minutes to speak.
Um, thank you. Uh, hi, good afternoon, um, or good night, I don't know. Um, I'm Salma and I live in 59 Madison Avenue, Chelsea. Um, though I currently don't attend a Chelsea Public School, I still am a resident of Chelsea and want to put a couple of things into perspective, knowing that, um, a couple of things into perspective, um, knowing that the action to pass the resolution to acknowledge Arab Heritage Month um, in Chelsea Public Schools is happening today. Um, so me and a couple of other students also want to attend for that purpose, and I'm sure you've already heard from them. Um, as Arab students from Excel High School, we've been able to host many events and do many things in celebration of our Arab heritage because of our club, Arab Student Union. Um, we want to provide the student perspective of things and how acknowledging Arab Heritage Month, um, to be its own official month would individually impact us um, and bring students up in our schools, um, just like coming from one community to another. Um, while the population of Arab students might not be nearly as high as Hispanic students in Chelsea, there still is a high population of us out there. Um, the issue that I've found is that there have been many barriers holding us Arab students back from putting ourselves out there for reasons such as, oh, we don't feel, feel heard enough, or it just feels pointless to make clubs at times because no one's going to join anyways. Um, and it honestly doesn't even come down to a matter of just making an affinity group like Arab Student Union, um, that we have at Excel. But it also comes down to the question of what happens next, like what's going to happen next after that? What are we going to settle for? What do we want to do after we've established a club? And honestly, being able to celebrate Arab Heritage Month gives students something to do. Um, such as planning events like we've been able to do, um, answering all those questions. However, in my personal experience, the biggest barrier, and I'm sure it applies to many other Arab students, um, as well, is education. And by that, I don't mean what we're learning in our classes. Um, I found that instead of spending most of this month celebrating my identity as an Arab American, I've actually been spending a lot of time educating others on common misconceptions or stereotypes that they've had about us. I love explaining things to people about my culture and my identity, um, especially what comes with being an Arab American. Um, but as I've grown older, I've been shocked again and again by how many misconceptions come with it. Things that I've thought were common information actually weren't common information. It's been like a slap to the face every time, um, I come to that realization again. Um, but I've noticed that with every event in April that our club has hosted, um, at Excel, close friends or even friends that I don't even talk to as much have been extremely open to learning about what we're doing. I'd get like a random text apologizing for, um, not attending and then asking me to fill them in on what they missed, um, randomly, and knowing how similar our communities are, I'm sure that would happen in Chelsea as well. Um, it's really heartwarming to see that. And even though we don't really need a designated month to celebrate this part of our identity, it's still great to have a specific month just to be yourself, um, to celebrate something that makes you, you. And I hope to see the changes that I've seen in my community Excel also happen there.
Thank you so much, Salma. I believe that's it, but I would like to verify with Veronica. Yes. Awesome. All right, team, that closes up our public comments section. I will now turn it over to our Dr. Obeda, who will, uh, turn it over to Dr. Jennings to go over our equity update.
Great, well, I'm excited to turn it over to Dr. Jennings. Um, Dr. Jennings has been with us now, um, as he says, six months. And he's going to provide an update on his work and what he has been doing with our, um, equity audits. And so I'm going to turn it over to him, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and let him share.
Thank you, Dr. Beta, thank you, um, President Garcia Maritza. I am going to share my screen now. All right, let me go to present because I have done a presentation and not in present mode. Great. Let me first say, um, thank you so much, um, Dr. Beta and Council for allowing me to present to you. I won't be before you long. Um, but I, I will say first how, um, appropriate, how fortuitous it is for, um, Sarah, Islam, and, um, to, and Salim to share with us, to remind us the importance of our, um, Arab community here in Chelsea, so I thank you. Um, I will, um, please assure that I have spoken to numerous, um, Arab and Islamic students, um, students who practice Islam, who are alums as well as current students. And, um, uh, we, I've also sent out supporting, um, email, um, to our staff, principals, um, about how to support our students during Ramadan, so happy, holy Ramadan to you as well. So I am excited to be here. And the last time I was before you, I presented, I believe, in January. Um, couple of months later, this is marked my six months of being with you all. I'm doubly agglutated and happy. Um, my first presentation, I kind of shared with you, um, my onboarding. I focused in on the listening and learning audit, um, shared with you my theory of action. Um, kind of what I would like to believe to be a phase one. I'm happy to share with you the work, um, now, which I believe is, I'm, I'm, I'm calling it going into my phase two of action work. Um, but I, I, I wanted to give you this, the small caveat. No, I've been doing things, um, since then, but this is the exciting part where, um, where we're all excited about, um, leading into this process. Let me first say, um, on my agenda, I have a short agenda. I will share with you the commitments from the Equity Audit Committee, um, what we have to ourselves and to you. Um, the, the bulk of this presentation will be on the Equity Audit Overview. Then obviously I will end with questions and answers. One of the things that I've realized, um, meeting with multiple stakeholders and I believe is a friendly reminder of, of, of giving a definition um, that we're operating under about equity. Um, and so that is, all children and adults receive what they each need within an environment and system that is intentionally built for them to achieve academic, social, and emotional success regardless of their race, ethnicity, language, and/or other characteristics of their identity. That's the, the, the definition of equity that we are leading with and that we're operating under. Given our equity audit, um, we are committed to transparency, making sure that this process is highly collaborative, um, prioritizing the voice of our students, family, and educators, identifying root causes and not symptoms, and ensuring that we, um, end our process with concrete next steps. The Leadership Academy Equity Audit, and the Leadership Academy is the organization, um, that we decided to, um, use to lead this equity audit process for us. And their equity audits involve the collection of specific district data, um, that focus on particular needs and areas of concern. I want to highlight particular needs and areas of concern, and I'm, I'll address that later in the presentation, but I want you to see that. I want you to m- make, make note of that. Um, the organization of that data gives stakeholders the opportunity to identify the policies, practices, and behaviors that may be contributing to gaps in outcomes and access for key groups of students. The organization of that data of identifying our policies, practices, and behavior, it allows us to diagnose, one, our current state of equity in a district, two focal points, and three recommended strategies for making improvement. Um, I like to believe and say that this process is coherent. There's a through line from start to end. Let me first say that I am extremely excited about the Equity Audit Committee team that we have assembled. Um, each, um, the, the team represents three, three distinct roles. The Leadership Academy team, the, um, co-chairs, as well as, um, the nine committee members. And I will say that we only have nine committee members because the Leadership Academy, um, um, stresses, uh, the, the nine, as far as being a manageable number, they say more than that than the, the work, um, as the fusion process takes place. But the Leadership Academy, they are committed to facilitating meetings, reviewing district, um, equity-related artifacts, helping to identify data sources, develop a draft of survey questions, conduct focus groups, compile data-driven summary reports and recommendations. As co-chairs, we're committing to assembling Equity Audit Committee, scheduling and, um, co-facilitating meetings, helping to determine the focus, um, of focus group composition and questions, co-developing a plan for action planning meetings, and updating the superintendent. Committee members are committed to, and their role requires them to help focus craft, um, focus group composition and questions, recommend district equity-related artifacts, which is data, identify data sources, co-craft focus group questions, attend meetings, co-develop root cause, as well as contribute to shaping action plan. Um, as you will see, there is a lot of co-developing, co-planning, co-crafting. Um, going back to our commitments, this process is collaborative. Um, no one, the Leadership Academy, nor the, nor the co-chairs, nor the committee, no one has an agenda that they're running on their own, but this is truly a collaborative process, and we all collectively together have our hands in this process. Another thing that, that excites me the most about this committee is that we are truly diverse. Um, myself, I'm the co-chair along with President Garcia Maritza, who is your president of the school committee. She's the co-chair of the equity team with me, and then obviously Dr. Beta is SFCO. We have, as you see, for member representation, we have eight individuals that represent the district plus one community member. As for educators, we have two assistant principals on the team, one principal, one curriculum coordinator, one teacher, one dean, and one paraprofessional. For gender identity, we have two males, six females, and one binary individual. For ethnicity, we have four black, three Latinx, and two white. More insights that I think are interesting for you to see is we have a, a parent, we have multiple alums, and we even have, get this, um, a high school student who is amazing. We have multiple individuals whose first language is Spanish. Um, for the nine members, um, the, the district tenure runs from ten years to six months. I'm obviously the six months person. And I'm happy to say that every grade band is represented from the ELC to the high school. So I mentioned earlier about, um, that the equity audit is focused on specific data, specific needs. And so based on the listening and learning tool, the qualitative data that I gathered and speaking to over a hundred and three individuals, plus multiple groups of parents, so I spoke to over a hundred and twenty-five individuals through my listening and learning tour, plus Dr. Beta's initial listening tour. Our focus, our main focus, um, for our equity audit is culture competency. With culture competency, we, we're looking at culturally responsive teachers and staff. Ensure all students have access to, to learning experiences that are relevant, respectful of difference, rich, and engaging. Within, um, the culture competency, the Leadership Academy has identified six priority areas, excuse me, that it's found in its research to help districts become more equitable in their systems. So those six areas are establish, communicate, and garner support for vision of equity. As an example will be, communicate clearly to the community that our teachers and staff members will be trained in and observed for their use of culturally responsive curriculum. That's an example. Um, the second priority area is develop a highly effective team of equity-minded educators and leaders. An example of that would be ensuring that all educators understand and honor the characteristics and contributions of different ethnic groups. The third focus area, or the, excuse me, priority area is set accountability measures and monitor progress. An example of that would be establishing expectations that enrollment in honors and AP courses is reflective of the district's overall demographics, design and implement processes to support this work. The fourth priority area is budget equitable and within equity and with equity in mind. An example of that is ongoing job embedded professional learning that focuses on anti-bias and culturally responsive teaching. It's an example. The last two, build a supportive, inclusive, and equitable school culture. An example of that would be ensuring that each student has a strong relationship with at least one adult in the building. Programs encouraging this includes advisory and mentoring. The last priority area, um, is partner with early childhood education programs to ensure these practices start early. An example of that would be budget for ongoing job embedded professional learning on anti-bias and culturally responsive teaching within the early childhood, um, setting. So let me just repeat that. These are six priority areas that the Leadership Academy has found within its research. Um, within the culture competency, um, we could do to help make sure that school districts are more equitable in their systems. You will find these six priority areas as we move forward embedded in, in, in our other, um, areas of focus. Now getting to other areas of focus, we have four sub-areas. Um, culture competency itself is inclusive of everything, but we do have some areas where we need to lean in. And those four areas are pedagogy, personnel, family engagement, and discipline. So once again, I want to remind you, within these four areas, we will look and see where in our policies, practices, and, and systems and equity lie. So in teaching, teaching that is individualized, highly qualitative and rigorous is going to have the greatest impact on student achievement for our students. Personnel, students are most likely to be successful if they have diverse culturally responsive and highly effective teachers and other staff members. Family engagement, strong relationships between school, family, and community result in significant gains in student learning, better family-child relationships, and lower dropout rates. I just want to take a pin, put a pin right there and remember that we have one individual who's from the community, who's on our equity audit team. And then lastly, um, discipline, students are most likely to achieve academically and be prepared for post-secondary learning when they're in the classroom daily, have positive relationships with their teachers, and support of mental health professionals as needed. So taking a step back, the larger focus area is culture competency, but we have four sub-areas of pedagogy, personnel, family engagement, and discipline. Leading to the data, there obviously will be two types of data that we will gather, that's both qualitative and quantitative. The qualitative data will consist of focus groups and surveys. We will have six focus groups that'll be sixty minutes long. Um, the, the Leadership Academy requested it be ten. Um, I asked them for one more, and they agreed. Um, and we'll have one facilitator there, one note taker, and it'll be a cross-section of stakeholders. And then, um, because, because we only can do six focus groups and only eleven individuals per focus groups, we won't be able to get everyone or interview everyone. Um, but however, all stakeholders will have opportunity to complete surveys. And so focus groups and surveys will potentially include, um, residents of Chelsea, school committee members, um, principals, I mean, the whole gamut. Everyone who touches the district in some shape, form, or fashion will find themselves ideally in focus group or survey. Lastly, in the quantitative, um, marker, and this is the, particularly district data, will be climate surveys, board district and school policies, and student and school disaggregated data. So the next four months, we're now in April. Um, President, um, Garcia Maritza and I, um, did engage in a pre-launch. We met with Leadership Academy, um, shared out our desires and concerns as we do this equity audit. Um, April, the fifth, was our first equity audit meeting. Our second meeting will be the 28th of April. And at this meeting, we will set our focus on, um, our focus groups, questions, et cetera. Moving into April and May, we will establish the current state, and this is when we gather data. It is from the data that we'll be able to establish our current state. After we gather all the data, we'll, excuse me, data, we'll move into May-June, where we, where we will begin to lean into and discover root causes. Once again, I want to make sure there's a distinction between root causes and symptoms. Oftentimes, we get caught up in symptoms. We put interventions towards symptoms and not root causes. And then lastly, having a clear understanding of the root cause, we will develop a plan of action together that we will use. You will see through this time and task chart, there is coherency, there is a through line, and everything adds for each other. So nothing is, 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 um, out of order or, um, a happenstance. So next steps, as a reminder, um, committed to learning is hearing and hearing and hearing. We will be gauging in the district data. From the district data, it will give us our current state. From our current state, we'll lean into the root cause, what are the root causes. Once we have that inside information, we'll be, begin to then to develop an action plan. Is with this action plan in mind, um, that we will lean into a district-wide equity plan. Um, so once again, with the Leadership Academy recommendations in hand, we would then take that document to begin to work on a district-wide equity plan. This plan will be three to five years. I believe it will touch school committee, district level, as well as school level. And we will, because this is a district-wide plan, we will need various stakeholders with various skills and expertise and commitments and intimacy with the district. So it will involve both committee members as well as others. And then last, but certainly not least, um, this equity plan, um, will align with key district initiatives. That is the end. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that we can see each other, and I'm open for, um, conver- um, open for question and answers. I'm going to also, um, encourage Dr. Abeda to, um, jump in, um, whenever she sees fit.
In quick, in quick last cheer. Okay. The spirit crashed.
Understand, so I, I will do that. Um, I will invite, um, President Garcia Maritza, if you want to add into that too as co-chair, please feel free to do so. I see Dr. Beta is, is, is booting on, um, right now, for a couple of seconds. Thank you, Dr. Beta. As I, I'm like, um, Dr. Beta isn't here, so I guess. But I was just saying, um, Doc, um, please feel free to jump in, chime in anytime during this question and answers. I also offer the same extension to, um, President Garcia, um, Maritza as well.
Awesome, I just, I'll quickly jump in as, as co-chair of this committee. I'm so honored to do this work. I thank the community, the district, the students, the committee members that pushed us to get this done, get this equity done, form this committee. We are so committed to do this work, and, uh, if it wasn't for the students and all of the advocacy behind this work, we would not have created this position for Erin or Dr. Jennings. We would not have been as far as we have come along in this process. So thank you, and thank you in advance for answering the questions, joining the, uh, focus groups, and, um, just participating along in this journey with us. So, um, Dr. So, Dr. Beta, if you want, and if you want to share anything or, you know, add anything else, and then after that, we can open it up to the team for questions.
She looked at, her face has frozen.
Okay, so no worries. She's having some technical difficulties, so let's turn it over to the committee to see if there are any questions, and hopefully we can get her back in here when her computer decides to work. Are there any committee members that have questions for Erin?
No, I don't have a question. I just want to thank him for all his hard work. You did a good job getting this organized, Erin. That's why we hired you to do a good job, and you did it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosemary. I was telling someone yesterday, each and every day, I wake up knowing that I'm going to work for our six thousand plus kids. Like, I wake up every day with passion and purpose, and I am completely humbled and honored to serve this community.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to add, you know, it's it's a lot of work, and in your time here, you've done a lot of work, so thank you for that. It's not easy, and it's still a long process that we'll have to go through, but, you know, I like what's in place and the steps that we're taking to get to where we want to be, so thank you very much.
Ms. Jeanette, your support, your support is is, one, first and foremost, is unwavering. But two, it means a lot because of the commitment and intimacy that you have towards this community. So having you on the team and being a champion and being a part of this process is worth his weight in gold. So I say thank you a million times over.
Thank you.
A quick question, and you may have mentioned this, so I'm sorry if you did. So when when thinking about the focus groups, I'm curious if, will there be like specific, like subs, like, like when it says cross-section of stakeholders, I guess my question is like, is it going to be like different focus groups on different topics, or will it be like a cross-section of different people across the district in each of them?
So I I would say yes, and actually at the meeting on the twenty eighth, the team will decide how we want to engage the focus groups as far as how are we going to slice them. Forgive me for not using a more scientific term, but slicing is what I'm going to use right now. So, you know, there's the possibility of having a student-focused groups, a community-focused groups, a community-focused group, or the possibility of a cross-section of teachers, specifically with with grade bands. And so I don't think that answer is best answered just by me or the or my or the co-chair. It, I would love, 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 and think is vitally important, and President Garcia Maritza also agreed that it's best for us to take that to the committee and collectively engage in how we believe that it will get the best insight for the focus group.
Perfect. Thank you. And and also, and also, you know, I echo everything that everyone else has said, thanking you and the rest of the group for all the work that you're doing so far. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And once again, I just want to repeat that, please know, School Committee, that you may get invites to a focus group or a survey. Please, 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 I beg you beseech you to respond. Your information and insight is vitally important, and we want to make sure that we capture as many stakeholders, the voice of perspective as possible. We, you know, I'm I'm thanking you, thanking you in in advance.
I echo that. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Dr. Beta, welcome back. So, Dr. Beta, to catch you up to speed, we have gone through a couple of questions from the committee members. And before moving on, we want to give you a chance to kind of share a few things about this this work, the equity.
I I do have one one last question. I'm curious, just around the timeline for the process, looking at the slide around developing the plan of action. It says that that would happen in June and July, and I know that in the past we have not met during those during those months. So I'm curious, you know, will we be in conversation, kind of ask this plan of action is being developed? Or will we kind of hear about it after it's it's developed and in fall? Just curious, like, what that communication is going to look like?
So I I can go ahead and answer that. So in the summers, we do normally, historically, we did not have school committee, as you said, last summer was a little odd, so I can communicate. I can communicate via memo or emails and keep you posted for sure. And I I do believe that the the work that's going to be happening is is mostly gathering data and information. And so then I can provide updates to you via memo or email.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the committee members? Alrighty. Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Jennings, for your update. Alrighty, team, moving right along.
Madam Chair. If I may, I wanted to make a motion to go out of order on the agenda and move up the two resolutions. After hearing the equity report, I just felt that we should move these two up, the autism awareness resolution and the National Arab American Heritage Resolution for a vote.
Second.
Thank you. Alright, so to those watching at home, we are moving out of order and and moving two resolutions up. And then we will come back to order as soon as we cast a vote for those two resolutions. And so as Dr. Beta gets the documents ready to present, I can share a little bit more about the the reason behind myself or me getting these two resolutions and presenting these two resolutions to the committee. So the first one is the, if I'm not mistaken, is the Autism Awareness Month. April is Autism Awareness Month. And my godson Achilles Maldonado Vega, who is also the son of City Councilor Melinda Maldonado Vega, has autism. And through that, we have learned so much as a family. I am also a special education teacher, and so, you know, I I noticed we don't, we don't have a resolution for for this Autism Awareness Month. So in just a few moments, Ms. Dr. Beta will be posting, will be sharing the resolution for us. I'll read it, but before that, I'd like to ask any committee members if they have questions, or I'd like to open it up to the floor before reading and casting a vote on on this resolution. Any comments?
Yeah, I have a, just a quick comment. I just want to say thank you for for bringing this up. I think, you know, celebrating the the, you know, neurodiversity of our students is is really great and something that we we should continue to to do any way that we can. You know, we we know that districts like Chelsea tend to have kind of disproportionate special needs students. Not sure, you know, specifically autism spectrum where where we land, but I, you know, it is, it is super important. So I just want to say thank you and and, you know, definitely fully in support of of our students and making sure that we are, you know, constantly working to to support those students. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for your support, Mr. Jimenez. Any other comments or questions before reading the resolution? Thank you, Dr. Beta. I know you have a lot of documents to go through, so.
I switched over computers too, so I had everything downloaded on the other one.
Oh, boy.
There we go. Woo, we did it.
Great. Alrighty, so Autism Awareness Resolution, dedicated for gifted individuals like Achilles Maldonado Vega, my godson. Whereas recognizing April as National Autism Awareness Month began in the United States in the nineteen seventies to draw attention to the challenges faced by the community of individuals with autism. Whereas April second is observed internationally as world autism awareness day. And whereas autism is a bio-neurological developmental disability typically diagnosed during the first three years of life, greatly impacting individuals of their ability to communicate and interact with others. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, National Health Statistics Report conclude the prevalence of autism spectrum disorder has risen to one in every fifty-four children in the United States. And whereas individuals with autism face difficulties in their workplace due to the lack of accessibility and resources for their needs. And whereas autism is reported to occur in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, but it's four times more common among boys than among girls. And in, and whereas in Chelsea Public Schools, we provide services for more than a hundred and sixty students on the autism spectrum. And whereas, sorry, Dr. Beta, do you mind scrolling down? Whereas participation in observance in National Autism Awareness Month helps to promote awareness through education on the needs of this community. And therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea School Committee hereby, one, celebrates National Autism Awareness Month from April first to the thirtieth, and April second is Autism Awareness Day. Two, recognizes and commends the family members of children with autism for their sacrifices and dedication in providing the support for the special needs of children with autism. Three, emphasizes and raises awareness for the early intervention services to begin soon after a child is diagnosed with autism in an effort to improve potential outcomes for people with autism. Four, acknowledges, empowers, and supports autistic city employees through resources and necessary accommodations. Five, acknowledges, empowers, and supports the teachers, paraprofessionals, and other educators who possess the desire, caring, and skills necessary to teach, assist, and respond to students with special needs, including those with autism, and who work tirelessly to educate, excuse me, educate and provide high-quality program, programming for students with special needs enrolled in the Chelsea Public School District. Be it further resolved that the Chairwoman and members of the Chelsea School Committee support that the month of April is Autism Awareness Month in the Chelsea Public Schools. We encourage our students and staff to join in celebration of the special observance. And witness thereof, we, the members of Chelsea School Committee, approve of this resolution. But, Onika, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, consideration and action to approve the Autism Awareness Resolution. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Alfaro? Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia Marissa?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Vila?
Yes.
Chairwoman, do you want me to give Ms. Alfaro one more call?
Yes, please. Yes, I'm sorry, it got frozen here, but yes, to the resolution.
That's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, one absence, the motion carries. The next resolution we'll read and discuss is Arab American Heritage Month. And given that it's the second day of Ramadan, I I wish all those families, other Muslim families, including my husband, a happy Ramadan. Before reading this resolution, I'd like to open it up to the committee to see if there are any questions or comments on the resolution. Alrighty.
I'm happy to, sorry, I was muting myself. Just want to hop on again and thank the Chairwoman for introducing this. You know, I I think it was really great hearing from the students who came to speak, so, you know, thank you. Thank you to all three of the students for for, you know, the work that they've done in in their school and and in our, in East Boston and here in Chelsea as well for elevating, you know, the conversations around around this issue. You know, in the same way that that we, you know, those of us who are who are Latinx, right, have to push back against the stereotypes of the Latinx community, right? We also have to push back on the stereotypes of other communities. And so I, you know, definitely want to share solidarity with with the the work that they do and you know, always, always looking for opportunities to to engage. So, you know, I I think that the School Committee is doing great service by highlighting this and by celebrating this culture. And also, you know, I I think one thing important to remember, right? There are Muslim Arabs, there are Christian Arabs, right? Like, there are, there is a huge diversity within that community as well, right? And and I think it's it's crucial that we not only think about them as as one culture, right? But a combination of many, many cultures. So, so happy Ramadan to the celebrating. And and also, yeah, thank you so much for for this. The Chairwoman.
Mr. Jimenez, with that, let's begin. Resolution to acknowledge and celebrate April as National Arab American Heritage Month for Chelsea Public Schools. A resolution of the Chelsea Public School System affirming its acknowledgement of April twenty twenty-one as National Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture. And whereas since migrating to America, people of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas the history, I'm sorry, the history of Arab Americans in the United States remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech. And whereas Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. Whereas they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. Whereas the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Arab American heritage is worthy of celebration. And be it further resolved that the Chairwoman and members of the Chelsea School Committee support that the month of April is National American, National Arab American Heritage Month in the Chelsea Public Schools. We encourage our students and staff to join in celebration of this special observance. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to approve the National Arab American Heritage Month Resolution. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia Marissa?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Vila?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative and one absent?
Eight in the affirmative, one absence, the motion carries. Thank you, thank you for all, I'm sorry, thank you to those who supported very important resolutions. And team, what I want to mention is that resolutions are just one step. The work must continue. There is so much more work to be done. And with our Equity Committee, we hope to continue working together as a family, como una familia, to work alongside our students and families to resolve these issues in our city, in our community, in our schools. So thank you. Do I have a motion to go back into order?
Second. Second.
Awesome. Thank you. Team, I will now hand to- Team, I will now hand it over to our Vice Chairwoman. I do have to step out a little early today. Apologies for that. To the students and families, have a wonderful and safe April vacation. Thank you for having me. Vice Chair, Ms. Anna Hernandez, thank you for taking the lead to finish facilitating.
You're welcome, Kelly. Good luck. Okay, um, I think now we can move on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Albada?
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, I will, Vice Chair, I will start off. Today, we are not doing student achievement, um, or indicators of success. Sir, Ms. Cat, are we doing them today? I thought, I'm pretty sure, okay, we are. I wanted to make sure, because I know some stuff, um, we were holding off. All right, so we'll go ahead and do our indicators of success. Let me stop and turn it over. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we just have a few indicators for the month of March. And we'll start with indicator two, which is the daily attendance, which you can find on page three. As you can see from this chart, the pre, grades three and four are meeting our goal of district-wide daily attendance of just being ninety-five percent. And pre-K through nine are all over ninety percent as well. We're still working hard on grades ten through twelve. That has been a little bit more difficult with remote learning. But just to give you an indicator, last year in March, we were at ninety-two point five percent. And this year, as you can see, we're at ninety-one point four at this time. If you turn to page six. Sorry to make you seasick. You'll see that at the, currently, we have forty-two students who have dropped out this year, which is an increase of fifteen during the month of March. However, as you can see, we're at two point seven percent, which is almost two points below where we were last year. Down below here, you can see that again, the majority of the students who have dropped out are L students with twenty-nine. The details on the fifteen that dropped out this period on the next page, hold on, let me just scroll down. Technical difficulties here. There we go. So fifteen have withdrawn. And as you can see, ten of them were English language learners, and a majority of them were in grade ten. Unfortunately, a lot of these students, one went to the adult ed program, which is wonderful. But you can also see that many of them, we do not know where or what their plans are. And then finally, if we move to page nine, it's on our mobility. You'll see that this month, another ninety-three students either came or left our district. The balance of that is that we lost thirty-five. You can see that in the ELC, things remain fairly constant. But in the middle and in the elementary and middle schools, we lost about ten children. And in the high school, we lost sixteen. So overall, this month, we, we were reduced by thirty-five. Overall, our churn rate so far is about fifteen percent, which is about two percent lower than last year at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, I turn it back over to you, Dr. Albada.
Thank you, Ms. Cat. Okay, so we will now do an update on school reopening, and rather than reading a report, I thought I'd prepare a quick PowerPoint so you can see visually a little bit more of what we've been doing with school reopening. So just to start though, and to preface everything, that our staff and educators and teachers, central office staff have worked extremely hard to open schools this month. And on April fifth, we welcomed our special education students, and it was, it was so nice to see students in our building for the first time in a very, in a, a year and, almost, and a half. A year and a month and a half. And then on April twelfth, we welcomed our K three-four students, and I just wanna thank everyone that made that possible from our buildings and grounds, facilities, custodians, nurses, administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, crossing guards, bus drivers, this leadership team here. It was a major feat, and it was quite a celebratory moment for us to see our kids walk back in our doors, and we've just been celebrating for the last two weeks. So I just wanna thank everybody for making, making this happen. So tonight, I'm just, I'm gonna do a very brief presentation on the review of our status of our phase-in plan, athletics, COVID-nineteen testing, vaccines, and questions and comments. So several weeks ago, we presented our phase-in, and as you can see here, we had our special education and sub-separate students return on April fifth, and our Chelsea Opportunity Academy students. Then on April twelfth, we expanded to grades kindergarten through four. And now we are preparing for the next phase-in, which is our middle schools on April twenty-eighth. The teachers came back yesterday, and we handed out cookies and just welcomed them back. We're so glad to see our middle school educators back in, in person, so they, students will return after April break on April twenty-eighth, and then high school opening is still to be determined. And as you can see, remote learning still continues for many of our students whose families have chosen to stay in remote learning. And so some of the reactions of our students and staff returning to in-person learning, they're happy to be back in school, they're, they're excited, there are many smiles and elbow bumps on the first day. And to quote one student, one second grade student, and I asked her, how does it feel to be back in school? And she says, I'm so happy to be back in school. Being at home was boring. So student, the students have all seemed to be adjusted really well. They're wearing their masks, there's no issues with the mask-wearing, and they're just, they're very well adjusted. I've been visiting schools every day since we've opened and we're, it's, it's, it's pretty normal, you know, some things are different for sure, and we're all adjusting to that, but our staff, our administrators, and our teachers have done an amazing job. Athletics have restarted, so we have boy soccer, girl soccer, volleyball, cross-country, and football in session right now. We have a total of ninety-six students engaged in those sports, and then we have baseball, softball, and track starting on May seventeenth. And then for COVID testing, we're in week five of COVID-nineteen testing in schools. It is completely voluntary again for staff and students. And as we progress each week, we, we get more and more students and staff who want to participate. And to date, we've tested five hundred and thirty-seven people. And our vaccination clinics continue. We've held three vaccination clinics with the help of the City of Chelsea and the East Boston Health Center. We vaccinated approximately three hundred and thirty Chelsea Public School educators during those three clinics. And we are currently, Mr. Delaney is working with the city to identify families and students for upcoming clinics on April twenty-fourth and May fifteenth. And these clinics are actually for students and their families. And so any questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank you, Superintendent. I had the opportunity to go down to the Mary See Bird Complex today and sit in one of the classes, and I can tell you, the schools are very safe. The students are very happy, and so are the teachers happy to be back in the classroom. So I had that opportunity today because I wanted to see what it was like for the children to be getting educated in a special environment, and it was really nice. It was, they have it set up beautifully, and the kids are safe to be in the schools now. Thank you very much, Superintendent.
After that, I could ask the question about the reasoning why we don't have a date yet for the high school student to return in person?
Thank you, Member Wilson. We do not have a date yet. We're actually waiting for our Department of Education. And I, they do have, they, they're, they're in conversation right now. We do think it's coming, and the date will be announced very soon. I think as a matter of fact, it might be announced this week. But the.
Thank you.
Jesse is planning on moving forward with opening up high schools.
Okay. Thank you again, Dr. Beta.
You're welcome.
I'm, Dr. Beta. Sorry. No, go, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say when I, actually, last week when I woke up and I saw crossing guards on the street, it was just so surreal to see that, and, you know, I think everybody's excited of going back, but there's still that fear as well, and a little bit of anxiety, but, you know, we just have to take it day by day, and I do still teach dance, and I asked the students, are you guys back in school? And they were so excited. They were so happy that schools opened up, so, you know, like I said, we're taking it day by day, and we'll see what happens, but I'm glad that we took the step to do what we're doing. Thank you.
Dr. Beta, my question is around students, especially in the high school, I guess sixteen-plus and vaccinations. I'm curious, do we, do we require other vaccinations that are not the COVID vaccine? And then, I guess, like, in, as part of that process, are we gathering information of, like, percentage of our students who are eligible and have, and how many of them have taken the vaccine?
Yeah, I will defer that to Mr. Delaney, because he's been working closely with the city and our nurses in this area, and so he actually has a lot more detail on this than I do, so. Assistant Superintendent Delaney, it's all yours.
Sure, so in, in terms of the vaccine, eighteen-year-olds can take any of the three vaccines that are out there, but the only one that is currently approved for anyone under eighteen, which is actually sixteen and seventeen, because nothing's approved for anything under sixteen, the Pfizer is the only one that the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can take. So the city has, I, you know, I'll, I'll take this opportunity to thank the city and Tom Ambrosino and Flora Maya for including us in, in this opportunity. They're working hard vaccinating our entire city and the residents of our city. And they were able to reserve a certain number, put aside for our students, and we're actually able to have two registration days this week. And, you know, we invited students to bring along a family member, and so we registered, I think we had about seventy-five kids over the past two days with family members. And so they'll be coming on the Pfizer. So if you said other vaccines, you're talking about outside of COVID, or are you just talking about COVID vaccines?
Yeah, I guess, like, my question was intended for the COVID vaccine, but I'm actually just, I guess, like, a side question is, do we track, like, do we require vaccinations for, like, you know, other things, like, you know, mumps or anything like that? Because I know some districts do, but I don't know if we do, and it's just, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, there are, there are a list, and I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but we do have required vaccinations that students have to have this year for, for a little while, interestingly enough. The state was requiring all students to actually get the flu vaccine, and that deadline was December thirty-first, but because of all the mitigation strategies that we've been using, you know, mask-wearing, hand washing, social distancing, the flu numbers were historically low, and so they pulled back that requirement. There was really no need to require the students to get the flu vaccine this, this year. But all those other ones that you're talking about, yeah, they, I think it's, we have to check every third grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, I believe. Yeah, we do track that, and every now and then you might have a couple of families for religious beliefs or whatever, but for the most part, yeah, the vast majority of our students get those.
And just to add on, you know, Mr. Jimenez Rivera, when, when our kindergarten students register, our pre-K students register, part of the requirement is they have to have certain vaccinate, certain MMR, your traditional vaccinations, and those are required. And, and then just as a, I'd like to also think the East Boston Health Center as well, that, that, between the East Boston Health Center and the city, we've just been incredibly fortunate to have so many of our educators and families vaccinated.
Yeah, second that, the thank you to, to both of those organizations, and also to Mr. Delaney for the work that he's been doing with the, the nurses, and thank you to the nurses as well for all the work that they've been doing. I know, as soon as I heard that, you know, the kids were eligible, I texted Dr. Beta, and I was like, and she was just like, oh, we're on it already, you know, it was, it was great, so. Thank you all for being, for being so on top of this. Yeah, because it's, it's super, super important, you know, to make sure that we're as safe as we can be as we're moving forward, because, you know, as Ms. Velez said, right, like, we're not, not through this yet, right, and there's a lot of anxiety and, you know, fear, some of it, you know, founded, others maybe less founded, but I think it's, it's important that as we're, as we're making this as safe as possible, vaccinating our students as soon as possible is, is probably one of the more important things that we can do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, a follow-up question to that, actually. I, I don't know, I, I know that there's currently studies happening for twelve to fifteen and potentially even earlier. I'm curious if things like that were to come out over the summer, that, that it were approved for younger ages. Is that something that we would be involved in or not because it's summer?
I, we still, we at Central Office work year-round. And so if, if that were something that became available, we would most likely partner with the city and our local health department and probably the East Boston Health Center and to sponsor vaccination clinics, and of course, parents would have to be involved for any students that are younger than eighteen.
Great, thank you so much. That's, that's great to hear.
Thank you so much, Dr. Beta. I'm sorry. You'll have to bear with me, I have, my voice is not the best tonight. My allergies, and I got my second flu, I got my second vaccine, and it knocked me for a loop. So. Are we done with, are we finished with the? No, we have the, the committee, the committee reports now, correct?
Ms. Hernandez, I make a motion that we accept all the school committee reports and commend them to the record?
I second those.
Okay. We'll commend those to the, to the record?
And if I may interrupt, before the curriculum instruction committee report gets commended to the record, I just wanted to make one comment, if that's okay. So just an update on the ethnic studies that Member Roberto presented to us several weeks ago in the curriculum instruction. What we have decided is that we would do kind of, we would continue with our process that we normally use for curriculum proposals at the high school level. But then we would also form a committee at the, at the high school level and engage stakeholders and just have some sessions where we engage people who've already done ethnic studies from other districts to have conversations with the task force that's gonna be working on this at the high school level. So we are modifying what we normally do. So we are modifying what we normally do with new courses for the ethnic course just so that way we can really get the word about the ethnic course and what it's about. And this actually ties a direct tie into our ECRE work as well. But I just wanted to provide a quick update to our, to, to you and to our public that we will be working on providing an ethnic studies course at the high school for next year.
Can I, I, I just want to quickly just chime into that. You know, as, as I've been working with folks who, who do ethnic studies in primarily Boston, but also in Holyoke, where they've been doing it for about seven years now. You know, one of the most important things that they, that they've mentioned is the importance of engaging community in the process of creating an ethnic studies program. So I just want to, just want to thank Dr. Beta for, you know, really, really pushing for, for that engagement well, as we're, you know, trying to create this type, this program. But just want to, just want to say, you know, if anyone in the community is interested in, in learning more, please reach out to me. I'd be happy to talk to folks about it, to make sure that we're engaging as many, as many folks, you know, in the schools, but also externally, right, to make sure that we are really building the program to be the best version that it can be. Thank you.
Dr. Beta, it was also brought to my attention that we had missed the student representative update.
Oh, okay. So, let's, do you want to go ahead and commend these to the record?
Yes, we commend, I'll commend the, the committee reports to the record and move back up to the student representative update.
Our student representatives are not actually here tonight.
They're not?
No.
Okay, okay then. Seeing no student update, then we will move on to, to unfinished business. And seeing none, I guess we move on to new business. First action is consideration and action to accept ten thousand dollars for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the FASSA Completion Opportunity Grant, item number two one, two one S C three one. Explanation, this grant will be used to provide direct support to students and families as they complete the free, the free application for federal student aid, application for college financial aid. Funds will be used for contracted services and stipends and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts Law Chapter seven, seventy-one, Section three seven A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to accept ten thousand dollars from the Department of Education in elementary and secondary education for the FASSA Completion Opportunity Grant. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative and three absent.
Six in affirmative and three absent? Motion passes. Consideration and action to accept the following changes to federal grants allocations for school year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, totaling a net increase of six thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Item number twenty-one S C three two. Explanation, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has adjusted Chelsea's allocations for physical year, physi, physical year twenty twenty-one for Title One, Title Two A, I, idea and early childhood special education grants as it does each year. The additional funds will be used for the same priorities as were originally established for each grant. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept the following changes to the federal grants allocations for school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, school year totaling a net increase of six thousand four hundred and eighty-two. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes, sorry, lost my new button.
Ms. Alfaro is here, I guess. Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
I have a yes from Ms. Car, Ms. Alfaro in the chat. That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent? Motion passes. Next, consideration and action to accept the following private grants for school year twenty twenty and through twenty twenty-one. Books Grants two thousand, Sports Matter Grant one thousand, New England Patriots Foundation five thousand, Personal and Workplace Success Skills twenty-five hundred, and Anna B. Stern's Foundation up to fifteen thousand. Item number twenty-one S C thirty-three. Explanation, funding for the Books Program will support fitness and training programs for female athletes at Chelsea High School and will be used to purchase equipment and sports supplies. The Sports Matter Grant from Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation will also be used to support girls' sports at Chelsea High School. In addition to athletics, programs will be, will receive funds from the Patriot, Patriots Foundation to support the football team at Chelsea High School. These funds will be used to purchase equipment. The inter, intergenerational literacy program will receive funds from the Personal and Workplace Success Skills Library Case Study to be used to pay teachers' stipends, printing costs and other expenses. Funds from the Anna B. Stern's Foundation will be used by the I L P for stipends, student assist, assistance, supplies and other expenses. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only for the, with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to accept the following private grants for school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Box Grant for two thousand, Sports Matter Grant for one thousand, New England Patriots Foundation for five thousand, Personal, Personal Workplace Success Skills for two thousand five hundred and the Anna B. Stern's Foundation for up to fifteen thousand. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent? Motion passes. Moving on to the next one. Consideration and action to accept thirty thousand dollars from Education Development Center, NSF for the Innovation Pathways to Data Careers Grant. Item number twenty-one S C three four. Explanation, the district submitted an application for an Innovation Pathways for Data Careers Grant. As part of the first year of this grant, Chelsea High School will design, develop and test curriculum for a data module to be integrated into high school civics courses. Funds will be used for stipends, travel material, supplies, indirect costs and other expenses in support of the program. It is anticipated that the district will receive additional funds for professional development and other activities in years two and three of the grant program. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A provides for the acceptance of grants from educational purposes, for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to accept thirty thousand dollars from the Education Development Center slash NSF for the Innovation Pathways to Data Set Careers, I P D C Grant. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro? She says yes. Uh, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven, seven in the affirmative and two absent? The motion passes. Moving on to the next one. Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, Early Learning Center, Clark Avenue Middle School and Chelsea Opportunities Academy to Facilities and Transportation, item number twenty-one S C three five. Explanation, savings are available in benefits and payroll adjustments due to reduced spending for retiree healthcare insurance. I'm sorry, health insurance. Salary, salary savings at the Early Learning Center, Clark Avenue Middle School and Chelsea Opportunities are projected due to some positions being transferred onto grant funds and other vacancy savings. Savings in October instructional program, programs is due lower spending, due to lower spending in after-school programs in the intergenerational literacy program due to remote learning. The funds are being transferred to Facilities and Transportation to fund one-time expenses such as additional building improvements. Fund, funds may also be P P E in cleaning supplies and contract, contractual services in support of reopening. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, Early Learning Center, Clark Ave Middle School and Chelsea Opportunity Academy to Facilities and Transportation. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
The seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two option, absent. Motion passes. Next. Consideration and action to approve the, I believe we already did this one. Is this for the, for the? This for the autism?
Yes.
A resolution, we did that one, that one already passed?
Yeah, the only one we have left is the Fair Share Amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Roberto. Consideration and action to approve the Fair Share Amendment Resolution, item number twenty-one S C thirty-seven. The Chelsea School Committee supports the proposed Fair Share Amendment, which would cre, create an additional tax of four percent points on annual income above one million dollars and dedicate the funds raised by, by this, by this tax to quali, quality public education, affordable public col, colleges and universities and for repair and maintenance of roads, bridges and public transportation.
I, I'd like, I'd like to speak on it and, and read the resolution, if I may?
Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read, I'll read it first and then, and then speak about it briefly.
I was gonna, I was gonna read it, but I appreciate you to read it because my throat hurts.
No worries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd also, I'd like to thank Ms. Alfaro for co-sponsoring this resolution with me. We have, you know, through our respective jobs, we have been working with the coalition that is hoping to, to help pass this. So we are, we're excited to have the support of the committee, hopefully after we vote on this. So, resolution in support of the Fair Share Amendment. Whereas the best way to stand with and help working families as well as build a stronger economy that works for everyone is to make sure that we have high-quality public schools for all children, affordable public higher education and a reliable transportation system. And whereas students need a well-rounded education founded on a rich and varied curriculum that includes core academic subjects and opportunities to engage with music, art and athletics. And whereas major investments in public education are needed to help students recover academically, socially and emotionally from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas additional funding is needed to ensure that all schools can maintain or provide small class sizes, offer social emotional supports and hire additional counselors, nurses and social workers. And whereas new state revenue is necessary to rebuild crumbling roads and bridges, improve our public schools from pre-K through college, invest in fast and reliable public transportation, make public higher education affordable again and expand opportunities for healthy walking and bicycling. And whereas Massachusetts needed new investments in our transportation and public education systems before the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And now those investments are even more critical to lift our economy into an equitable and long-lasting recovery. And whereas our Commonwealth's highest-income residents, who have seen their collective net worth skyrocket in recent years, for some especially during the pandemic, pay a lower percentage of their income in state and local taxes than do the working-class people of Chelsea and clearly have the means to support the investments that our constituents need. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Chelsea School Committee supports the proposed Fair Share Amendment, which would create an additional tax of four percentage points on annual income over, above one million dollars and dedicate those funds raised by this tax to quality public education, affordable public colleges and universities and for repair and maintenance of roads, bridges and public transportation. Yeah, so, so just, just quickly chime in, you know, the re, most recent numbers that we have from the Department of Revenue is that fewer than five people, it might be as low as zero, we don't actually know exactly how many, have actually earned incomes of over a million dollars in the city of Chelsea. And yet, most of the revenue that would be raised by this tax, which would be really focused on people, it would be focused on people who make one million dollars each year, right? So, so if you, if you have one million dollars in your bank account, you're probably not going to be hit by this tax even, right? So it's really people who constantly make one million dollars. This money would, would go from, to, to ensure that those people are paying a fair share of their taxes so that, you know, we can have good schools in Chelsea, but also all across Massachusetts and to make sure that we're improving the infrastructure of our, our roads, our bridges, which have continued to deteriorate. And, and that, you know, our students and our, and their families use to, to get to work, to, to go, you know, have fun when they go on a trip to other parts of the state. So I think it, it's, this is another measure of many measures that have been proposed that this committee has supported in the past in, in, in kind of different, the, the different letters that we put out last year. So I hope that, that, you know, my, my members, fellow members will join, join me in supporting this so that we can continue to, to raise the revenues that we need to provide the students of Chelsea and Massachusetts with the schools that they deserve. And to, you know, make sure that we are fully funding the Student Opportunity Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto, for putting this together and putting, and bringing it forward to us. I appreciate it and I, I totally support it. And I don't have to worry, I don't have a million dollars anywhere, nor am I going to make it anytime soon. So I have nothing to worry about, but I am gonna, I am going to enjoy what this will provide for us. Does anybody have any questions? Before we vote?
And just for clarity and for people watching at home, this is a measure that will, will go on the ballot for the twenty twenty-two election. But it is, it has to be voted on by the legislature this year in order to get on the ballot for twenty twenty-two. So it is part of just making, you know, our advocacy with the legislature to make sure that it does go on the ballot.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to approve the Fair Share Amendment Resolution. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro? Says yes. Mr. Hernandez? Says yes. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Sorry, yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Okay, um, next would be communications, um, seeing none. Um, does anybody have anything they would like to um, announce? Speak on, comments? Yes, Henry?
I see, if, if I may, yeah, I, um, first of all, at the end of the uh, the meeting, can we have a moment of silence, silence for two of our residents who passed away uh, recently? Uh, one is Molly A. Greenberg, a graduate of Chelsea High in two thousand eighteen. And a long, uh, long time resident of the city, ninety-seven years old. Uh, Ms. Mamie Bridges, uh, resident here for Chelsea, passed away. And also to remind people, uh, birthday is happening Saturday, April twenty-fourth at nine AM at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and yes, um, I was going to ask for a moment of silence for Molly at the end of um, the meeting and definitely for the other person also. Um, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I, I'd like to um, speak for a second about um, the budget that, that came out from the state legislature yesterday. Um, yeah, so, so a- as we all, you know, we, we know that we, we started our budget process here in Chelsea um, based on Governor Baker's proposed budget. Um, which uh, gonna get a little technical here quickly. Um, so the Student Opportunity Act is a seven-year plan. Um, this is, we're entering year two, uh, year two budget. Governor Baker's proposal um, included only year one, which would have set us up to kind of not be on target to, to fully fund the, the Student Opportunity Act um, on time. And so, you know, as we were moving forward, right, we, we were thinking, y- we either want one-sixth this year so that we can get, you know, kind of turn it into a six-year plan or two-sevenths, right, which is where we would have been had the, had this pandemic not happened. And so, um, on that count, the, the legislature's budget, which just came out yesterday, um, it does include uh, one-sixth. So it's, it's great, it's what we wanted. On the other hand, uh, because of the pandemic, there was also a severe undercount in Massachusetts of the number of students who are in school. Um, a majority of that coming from the fact that a, a lot of parents didn't enroll their kids in kindergarten or pre- or, or pre-k. Um, so there was about a four percent uh, enrollment undercount in Massachusetts and that is impacting the budgets for next year. And so, um, advocates around, around the state uh, are asking the legislature to essentially use the higher of the enrollments of twenty twenty or twenty nineteen um, in order to essentially fix that, um, because we know that a lot of these kids are going to be back. And so kind of, the, kind of the, the, the last, like, like the, the root of it is um, the budget, uh, we believe is underfunding education, uh, uh, funding in Massachusetts by about ninety million dollars. Um, and so, uh, in Chelsea, the, the drop is estimated to be around um, two-point-five percent uh, of the um, uh, of the enrollment, about two hundred students that are being undercounted. Um, and this undercount is especially uh, uh, driven by, um, you know, communities of color, uh, uh, urban districts and, and, you know, the, the type of community that Chelsea is. So I would just really encourage um, a- anyone who is listening to this meeting um, to, to really reach out to your legislators and to, to, to push them, to advocate, to, to make sure that, that they are not only fully funding the, the Student Opportunity Act so that we are on target and on time, but to make sure that we are fully counting, uh, you know, that, that we have an accurate count of our students. Um, that, there's gonna be budget amendments coming out, um, that, that support this. So I just really encourage you all to, to call your legislator and ask them to, to make sure that the enrollment is correct and that the enrollment that we're using is either the twenty nineteen numbers or the twenty twenty, whichever is highest, which I, I believe for Chelsea would be the twenty nineteen. Um, somebody, uh, someone from central office, please correct me if that, if I'm, if I'm wrong there. Um, and I, I just also wanna, wanna highlight that the Gateway Cities Caucus from the legislature did send a letter to um, to the Ways and Means Committee uh, last Monday, on Monday of previous week, um, asking for them to do this. And um, uh, it's, so this, this was the House members of the, of that caucus. And uh, I just wanna thank Representative Giannino from um, from, from Revere, uh, who covers part of Chelsea, who, who was a, a part of that letter, signatory for, for that letter. So, um, thank you to her and, um, you know, definitely, um, we, I, I will be calling my, my legislators and, um, and, and I ask you to do the same place. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Is there anyone else, um, Henry? Mr. Wilson, you have something else that you wanted to add? I think he's frozen. Or is it me?
I'm here, but if you can, I wanna thank the um, uh, Dr. Abada and her cabinet members, as well as the teachers and the parents and the students for a great jumpstart for being back into class. Uh, just wanna thank everybody for a great job, everything I've heard so far, um, from some parents and from some students, my neighbor kids and stuff, that they are very happy to be back in school and everything has gone very smoothly. So I think the um, superintendent of school and her cabinet members and all the rest of the teachers and facility members, facility people and everyone else who um, welcomed the kids and uh, made it a good time for the first week so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have the same thing also. It's, it's all been positive. We haven't, I haven't heard anything negative about the beginning of school for these students. On the contrary, everybody's been so excited to be back in school. It's great to see kids excited about being back in school. Like kids they usually didn't want to go to school are excited about being in school and that just, that's great. Maybe this pandemic had some good side to it. So, does anyone else have um, anything else they wanna say?
Um, just wanna quickly um, add on, um, I, I thank Rep. Giannino, but I did not thank Senator DiDomenico, who I know has been very on top of the um, of, of the Student Opportunity Act funding. Um, and, you know, kind of the budget is still in the House, so that's kinda why uh, I, I brought her up, but I know that um, Senator DiDomenico has been very on top of that. Um, so thank you to him. I have not spoken with Rep. Brian yet, so I, you know, don't wanna, don't, don't wanna kinda go one way or the other there. But I, I will uh, thank him for his support once, uh, once I spoke, speak with him about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else, any, anyone else have anything further? Okay, if we could then move on to the moment of silence, um, Mr. Wilson, if you wanted to, um.
So, we do, uh, to our student, uh, next student, I should say, let's go, student of the Chelsea Public Schools. Molly A. Greenberg, graduate two thousand eighteen and to a longtime resident of the city who passed away recently, uh, Ms. Mamie Bridges. Uh, family is well-known throughout the community, uh, gave a lot to the community and she passed away at the age of ninety-seven, young age.
Wow.
So.
Young age.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, everyone. Um, I wish everyone at home a great um, vacation week and a great, um, just great, safe vacation and ready to go start back up um, next week. Um, the following week with a whole, full, full, um, full rest of the year, God willing, keep our fingers crossed and pray that everything goes exactly how we've planned. Um, and um, hopefully get back to, to some normality or our normality, I should say. Um, thank you everybody for your patience with my voice and my reading and um, so forth. And um, and I will call to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Again.
Meeting adjourned, Dad.
Again.